Okay, let's call it order. The, um, are we ready back there?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. The, um, October thirteenth, Rockport School Committee meeting. This is being recorded video and audio for future viewing.
They can't hear you.
I'll bring it closer. There you go. Feel like I'm on NPR Fresh Air. This is being recorded, uh, video and audio for future viewing and listening pleasure. For the record, we're gonna go around, starting with June, and introduce ourselves so people know who we are.
June Sanfilippo, Business Manager.
Mark Lorenz, School Committee Member.
Nicole Altieri, School Committee Vice Chair.
Kathy Riley, School Committee Chair.
Mark Branco, Superintendent.
Amy Oaks, School Committee Member.
Jessica DeLeese, School Committee Member.
Okay, first item on the agenda. Do you wanna go through the agenda, or you wanna go through the beginning part here? Okay. First item on the agenda is approval of the, um, minutes from the October twenty-third meeting. Everybody should've, they were in your drive, you should've had a chance to review them. Are there any questions from those? No? Okay. I have a motion to approve those minutes as written.
So moved.
The second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of approving those minutes from October twenty-third? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Okay, we're moving into public comment tonight, for right now? Okay?
Yep.
All right. I see we have a lot of visitors, so this is very odd for us. We're usually a ghost town. So if anybody has, doesn't have any public comment, we'll move on. No? Okay. Okay. So, uh, Dr. Branco, do we have any correspondence?
We do not.
Okay. Uh, do we have any donations? I don't think I saw any in the drive.
We do not.
Okay. Any personnel matters at this time?
None to report.
Okay, our Student Advisory Committee Chair is...
Busy.
Empty. So we have no report from them. The Policy Subcommittee Progress Update, who would like to give that?
Policy Subcommittee did not meet this week. Um, Alicia, uh, and I communicated at the, at the conference that we'll talk about later in the agenda. She was running around like a crazy person, taking care of the MASC, MASSS Conference. Um, and I think is still wrapping her head around a reentry into, uh, policy review and just respectfully, um, asked that we, uh, push the meeting off. So we will meet two weeks from tonight for our next meeting.
Can we back up?
Yep.
Sure.
Hey!
We're so excited to see you. If you would like to introduce yourself.
Henry Parks, Student Representative.
Okay. Henry, would you, um, we, we passed over you, but I'm happy to back up and, um, if you would like to share what's happening with...
Um, we had two meetings so far, um, within the past two weeks, but we haven't really reached any conclusions as of right now, so no updates.
Any, um, any driving topics that you guys are discussing, that you're trying to whittle down, that you don't mind sharing?
There has been some, um, talk about the new, um, vaping policies and, um, privacy issues regarding the senior room, and more like liberty around it, so, yeah, those are where our main points.
All right, so, uh, at this time, because we have a lot of topics, um, on the table, and a couple of them require multiple people, I think what we're gonna do is I'm gonna try to reorder the agenda for us. And, um, so if you're taking notes, I'm gonna put it in a new order, just to get some people on the presentation platform, so they can, um, leave and not be stuck here all night. Uh, and then we'll just entertain one motion to accept the reorder, all at once, if that's okay? So, uh, the new order right now, we'll, we'll take the, uh, presentation for the Risk Behavior Survey first. Second, we would then combine the Communication and Advocacy update with the MASC, MASSS update, because they sort of go hand in hand, based on the sessions that a lot of us went to, so that would be two. Three, we'll come back to Capital Improvement Planning Committee and give you an update on the requests. Four, we'll come back to the Budget Development Timeline. And then five, we'll do the FY twenty-five Quarter One Fund Flow Finance Update. And so if somebody wants to just make a quick motion to accept that reorder.
Madam Chair, I, um, move that we reorder the agenda. So first, we talk about the youth risk behaviors, then we talk about Communication and Advocacy in the MASC Conference, then we talk about the capital improvement, uh, requests. After that, we'll talk about the budget timeline, and finally, we will talk about the Quarter One Fund Flow Update.
You have a second?
Second?
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
And also note that B, the recommendation that under ten new business that's being stricken from the...
So tonight, that's, yeah, that's still in process, and we will probably get that back on the agenda for our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
So at this time, we can bring Ms. Goodu and Ms. Rose up, and they have some guests with them, I believe, too, that they'll introduce. So before they get started, in your drive, you have two documents. One is the full report. The second is a second version of a slide deck, and there's still some, um, concerns around the slide deck reflecting the data that's in the report. So we're gonna ask that we focus on the report, and then, um, what they're gonna put together for us tonight is an updated slide deck that pulls right from the report. And then I'll put this slide deck into your, um, drive after the meeting tonight. So the report is what we're all using, uh, to inform our actions moving forward. So with that, I will turn it on.
Um, so we do have some guests here, and I would love for them to let you know who they are, um, since they took a, they were a big part of us getting this put together. Hi, everyone, um, my name is Chelsea, this is really loud, sorry. Chelsea Goldstein Walsh, I am the Regional Prevention Director at the Gloucester Health Department, um, but I oversee the Regional Prevention Network, which includes seven communities, including Rockport. So happy to be here to support the Rockport Public Schools.
Hi, I'm Jessie Palm, I'm the Regional Social Worker. I work in, um, four local communities, including Rockport, and I work with the school, as well as public health, to bring additional supports, and, uh, have been an advocate for getting the survey in the school, and for some interventions, now that we have some of the data, as far as where to go with this.
Sure, Tim Riley from Board of Health.
Ruth George, Ruth George, Board of Health.
And Barb McCarthy, Board of Health.
So Chelsea and Jessie are happy to answer any questions you have as well, and, um, we wanna thank them and Barb McCarthy, because through their grant funding and our Board of Health, that's how we paid for the, um, which, what is called now the Youth Health Survey, instead of the YRBS. Amy and I looked at the report, and instead of having Mark scroll through a hundred pages, we pulled out what we thought was the most important to share with you tonight, and we threw together another slide deck for you, so we could go through that. But feel free to ask us anything about any other, um, points in the report.
And I'm gonna ask Chelsea to feel like you can jump in anytime, 'cause Chelsea and Jessie have been wonderful, um, in not only helping us fund this work, but lead the work, in terms of, they came in, I think about two or three weeks ago now, led us through this entire thing, helped us to understand where we have grown, or maybe stabilized, I think, for the most part. The data's pretty stable, um, and/or in our favor over the last two years. This is the first data point that we have, you know, really to go off of, 'cause we gave it for the first time in twenty-twenty-two, and the second time in twenty-twenty-four. There is one important thing to note, just because it does skew the data slightly, that in the middle school in twenty-twenty-two, we did give it to sixth graders. In twenty-twenty-four, we did not. Um, and there was a, you know, a pointed reason for that, feeling like some of the questions were well over the head of sixth graders, especially when there wasn't, um, you know, a curriculum built around the questions, or a health or counseling person there to really aid them in answering the questions. So those questions weren't given to sixth graders this year. So some of the data may look like it went up or down, but there were good reasons for that. You know, a lot of the times, if you had combined data points of six, seven, and eight, and a lot of the eighth graders were the ones engaging in some of this behavior, then the percentages may look like they went up. But really, it's because the population was seven and eight versus six, seven, and eight, which could have made the percentages look different. So, you know, when we get to that, we can certainly look at that, but that's just something to keep in mind, if you notice spikes in data anywhere.
Yeah, and we, um, I can't remember exactly, but I think we had a bunch of eleventh graders on a field trip at that time, so that's why there's low participation in the eleventh grade.
And our eleventh grade is currently now our twelfth grade, which is a very abnormally small class, um, of only roughly forty students, so when you have ten or fifteen students out, um, that percentage can be skewed. So if you go to the next slide, I think? So we chose to just focus on a few things, and we apologize for the late nature of that in the drive. We were going to go with the, um, slide presentation that was presented to us, but when it got translated from the report to the slide deck, it was less easy for Jody and I to interpret. I think probably Chelsea could've done a wonderful job with it, but we wanted to be able to speak, um, you know, eloquently about the data. So we took it directly from the report, put some things in the slides that we thought could be important. But the committee has had access to the full report, so if there are slides we don't cover that you wanna talk about, we can certainly answer those afterwards. Some of the things that we felt were important to highlight was a sense of safety in school, because of course, that's one of our key focus points, is creating a sense of belonging and helping students feel safe. In school, back in, in the high school, um, seventy-eight percent of students felt safe in school versus seventy-three percent in twenty-twenty-two. Sixty-nine percent stable across the board, um, in middle school. And, you know, Chelsea, when she helped us review the data, and we looked at it from other places, that, what feels safe in school? It's an interesting question, does that mean physical safety, does that mean emotional safety? Um, I think it's all important.
Can I just stick up just a little bit?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, just a little closer.
Sure. I think it's all important, um, and something to note. But again, some of the questions and some of the way that they're asked, leave some room for interpretation. I will say, after we go over this data here, the hope is that we can also review it explicitly, explicitly with the students, in some form, um, as part of our Assembly and Advisory, um, to kinda get them in on what, what the sense is throughout the community, and help them to then be a part of the solutions, hopefully, moving forward. If you scroll. So bullying on school property, um, and again, eleven percent of high school students felt that they were bullied on school property in the last twelve months, was the question. Ten perc, versus ten percent in two thousand twenty-two. Again, I think, again, Chelsea, if you wanna jump in ever, please do. I think some of the subcategories and the subgroups are interesting to look at. You know, if twelfth graders felt it more than ninth graders, females versus males, um, things like that. So those are things that, when we dissected the data together, um, we paid particular attention to. Middle school roughly twenty-three, down slightly to nineteen percent in twenty-twenty-four.
Well, this one just, it's, it's interesting to note that they do give the definition of bullying, but that, I think, has a lot to do with how this question's answered as well. An understanding of what bullying really is, by the definition of the law, versus other types of behaviors that might happen in school.
Yeah, I think we've talked a lot about this term, so to have a lot of mental health professionals in the room is really interesting tonight, because this term has a legal definition when it comes to public schools. But as a parent, I can throw that around pretty easily, if, if my son has a problem at school, and I can call that school and say, you know, Ben's being bullied. When what Ben is experiencing is misbehaviors, misactions, misappropriate, um, language choices around peer, with peers, but not necessarily definable as bullying, until there's an investigation, and there's finding, and then, um, that's reported back. So we constantly have to reiterate that there's a legal definition of it. It doesn't mean it's okay for somebody to be inappropriate to a classmate, or to a staff member, or wherever the behavior's occurring. But it's this, this concept of a legal definition of the term that sometimes hangs human beings up. So, and I know you're spending a lot of time, when we talk about culture, and the culture in the schools, and a sense of belonging, that, you know, we're trying to get people to just use good, strong terminology to say, you know, Kathy was rude to me, or said something inappropriate to me, or as opposed to just throwing the bullying word out there, in a really loose way. But I think, by putting the definition in here, um, to the best of our ability, we're trying to help students kind of codify how they feel.
Well, I think what's also interesting is having the student data helps us to cross-reference and have multiple, um, points of data. So we have, obviously, the amount of bullying investigations we do every year, at each grade level, at each school. So those are the more, what actually reaches the legal limit of bullying, versus what are the students' perception of what's happening in the schools? So, you know, no matter what, I think data is really important, and if students perceive themselves as being bullied, whether they actually are, um, by the confines of the law or not, I think is really good information, and a good talking point for us to start having conversations with students about ways to help make that a better environment. So it will be interesting as we get this data. Again, this is the first time we've had it with multiple data points, to see some, you know, reliability, or is there consistency or accuracy across, um, sessions that we do it? But how we can then look at this data and cross-check it with the data that we have, you know, our discipline data, and our bullying data, and all that, to see how far apart they are. And again, talking with the students about it, particularly at the high school level, where, you know, we're really trying to help them to be advocates, and feel a part of creating that culture we're working towards. The adults can't do it alone. I think empowering them to be a part of the solution through data is gonna be really interesting and powerful, so we're excited about that. So, mental health, and this is another one that, you know, when you look at, um, versus other schools across the state, um, mental health is something that we're all worried about, it's not just a school problem, it's a, it's a community crisis, I think, of sorts, for a variety of reasons amongst many people, not just young people. But fifty-six percent of high school students reported that their mental health was not good sometimes, most of the time or always. So, again, this is not necessarily to the level where, you know, they wanted to hurt themselves or anything like that, they just felt not great sometimes, and I think that's really important data for us to have and know about. It is slightly down from when we did it in twenty-twenty-two, from sixty-seven percent to fifty-six percent at the high school, slightly up at the middle school, from forty-seven percent to fifty-two percent. So again, gauging, like, what they're doing, there, there are multiple slides in this, and multiple data points that are not on the slide deck, but are in the report, on, you know, what are you doing to deal with that, mental health, how do you make yourself feel better? You know, social media is obviously a huge problem, screen time, activity, um, nutrition habits, all those things are outlined a little bit more closely in the full profile.
And Chelsea, I had a question about this one. If it was a never, sometimes, most of the time, or always? And was this a combination of all three categories?
It was, so, um, any student who indicated sometimes, most of the time, or always, it was all grouped together, so... Yeah, so I mean, so it could be someone, like, yeah, sometimes I, my mental health isn't good, all the way to the end of the spectrum of, like, always, it's always not good. So this slide can be interpreted in many ways. So, so, current substance use of students in high school versus middle school. Obviously, um, as students get older, their use of substances gets more, um, which makes sense. And again, this is not necessarily, you know, in school or anything like this, this is for community information, about how many students, um, have consumed alcohol, used vapes, marijuana, cigarette smoking. I think, you know, slight, pretty stable from twenty-twenty-two, slight decrease, um, but not really statistically significant, I don't think, given our population. Forty-five percent to forty-three percent of alcohol use. Um, and again, this is, how many, Rockport High School students were asked if they used a variety of substances in the past thirty days? That could be anything from I had a sip of alcohol, to I drank, you know, twenty drinks. So, again, it's hard to say, um, you know, how excessive the use is, based on this. This is students who have used at least once in the last thirty days. Again, not super surprising for that age range, but interesting information. Vape use is slightly down, cigarette use is slightly down, which is good news, um, but still statistically significant. In middle school, again, lower percentages, which is good, which you'd like to see. You know, two percent to seven percent, and again, um, the, the increase in twenty-twenty-four for middle school students is not surprising, 'cause again, you're taking out all the sixth graders, who hopefully have not, or more than not, have not used, and taking all that good data of no, I've never, and so it's gonna make the percentage of seventh and eighth graders seem a little bit higher.
And six was zero.
And seven was zero. Yeah, and so it's, it's the eighth grade, as you get into eighth and beyond, experimenting with substances such as alcohol. Vapes, two percent to eight percent, marijuana, one percent to three percent, and pretty much across the board, zero with smoking cigarettes in the middle school. And the next slide goes a little bit more into vaping specifically, since... Yeah. So, um, overall, twenty-three percent of high school students used electronic vaping devices in the past thirty days. Again, this was given in the spring of twenty-twenty-four, so students who are not necessarily still with us, some seniors who have graduated. But again, slightly down, but statistically still significant amount of students who are using vaping devices. And again, I can't thank the Board of Health and Chelsea and Jessie enough for their support of helping us to at least begin, um, to do some solid educational work around this. I think through health classes and smaller pockets of things, we've always tried to do prevention programs, but hopefully, more holistically as a school, we can really seek to understand who's struggling with it, and rather than coming at it from a completely punitive angle, come at it with education, resources, loop-in parents, and really get the students who need the support, the support they need with vaping. The detectors do help us to try to at least keep the bathroom safe and open for people who wanna use it, for its intended purposes to use it, and those who struggle with it, help us to narrow in on a smaller subset of students, and try to get them the support they need. Jessie and Chelsea were in, meeting with the guidance staff, and Amanda just yesterday, I think, two days ago? Yesterday? Yesterday? With some really great resources, um, that we can give to parents and students. Again, really coming from a lens of education, outreach, community partnerships. So we're also grateful for the data, because that allows us to get grant funding, um, and other resources that will provide us more resources to give back to our students and back to the families. So screen time is another huge source of stress and angst for many of us, not just students, but adults as well. And so we've really tried, so far this year, to, um, reiterate it, to work with outside groups. We have our first Parent, uh, Family Principal Parent Series tomorrow night, where we're having a guest speaker come in to talk about social media, um, not just social media, but screen time. And I think the la, we've actually had her in before, but even back in two thousand nineteen, it was a lot more about what apps are our kids on, and how to keep them safe that way, which is still extremely important. But I think even more prevalent since COVID is just the amount of screen time, even if you're not doing anything necessarily negative on it. It's just that mental health and that anxiety that it creates in all of us, if you're on the screens for eleven, twelve, thirteen hours a day, which some of these students and, and adults are. So again, some of this data, overall, seventy-nine percent of high school students had three or more hours of screen time, on average, per day, um, not including time spent doing homework. Middle school students, sixty-four percent, three or more hours a day. Again, even an increase from right, increased or stable from right after COVID, so it hasn't quite gotten better, if anything, um, maybe worse. So it's something that we're, we're really trying to focus on, again, from an educational lens. You know, if anything, we've learned from working with kids, we're not gonna be able to shame them, or blame them, or, um, you know, just say, "social media and phones are bad," but trying to educate and have us all be more aware of the way we feel when we're on screens, and just think about healthy ways to at least escape it routinely, and get off and do other things, so that we can clear our heads and have good mental, um, capacity for whatever it is we wanna do. So again, this data can help with some of the grants, and some of the, um, funding for speakers, for education, and other things we hope to bring into our classrooms. Do you want me to keep talking? Okay. Um, the adult connectedness is obviously a huge piece in a small school that we, we pride ourselves, or at least we try really vigilantly to say that every student should have adult that they can connect with in the school. Seventy-two percent of high school students reported having at least one teacher adult they can talk to if they have a problem. Think we could aim to be higher than that, personally. And I'm a little surprised by that, but, again, it's really good data, um, because that's some, not easy, but that's a very concrete thing that we can seek to do through Assembly, Advisory, all these things, like who is your one connected adult, who do you have to talk to? Making sure students feel like they have that place, even if it's just that one person, and it doesn't have to be a counselor, or a principal, or it can be a teacher, it can be a paraprofessional, it can be anybody in the building that they feel safe to talk to. So I think that was a little surprising, but not bad. A good, good source of data for us to consider, as we have these conversations with our students. Fifty-eight percent of middle school students reporting having at least one teacher or other adult in the school who they can talk to if they have a problem. Again, this is based on last year's data, so we'll, you know, be looking to strive to create that sense, um, all of this year. And I think some of the work that we've done in creating of the new schedule, and building in that time for Advisory, and Assembly, and Win, and all those times where we're with adults, those teachers are supposed to be, and I think are, um, acting as supports for those students, and really trying to bridge that connection between the adults and the students. And this is just the overall connectedness of school, which is interesting, because considering the middle school had said they only had fifty-nine percent had a, an adult they felt connected to, seventy-nine percent of them said that they're connected to school. So they strongly agree that they feel close to people at school, and they're connected to their school. So, again, some of it's the way the questions are asked, maybe in the way that the students are interpreting them. Sixty-nine percent of high school students agree that they felt close to people at school. So again, there's, there's a lot of data points, I think that might be the last one on the slide, that are outlined. There are a hundred pages worth of data points, um, again, which Chelsea and Jessie went through with us, page by page. I think the, the good news of the data was that nothing was statistically huge difference for the negative, like, you know, from last time, but there were some gains that we would've liked to see, or things that we would've liked to see progress, that maybe didn't. There's also been a lot of transition, um, amongst the schools, and so hopefully, with this data moving forward, and a solid foundation of leadership and advisory and, um, mentorship programs, we can address many of these things within our schools. We're happy to answer any questions, if you have questions about things in the report that we didn't cover on these slides, we can talk about any of them, and we have professionals who have seen other data across the state, who maybe could answer more holistic questions about Rockport's data, comparatively speaking to others in the state.
So Madam Chair, if you guys wanna go either, I can go back to the beginning, if you wanna go tick through the certain topics, or if you just wanna go à la carte, so that each one of you asks whatever questions you feel like you have, that you've written down in prep, we could do it that way, if that's a little easier? Just go person by person, and then we can open it up, and maybe have Chelsea or somebody come up and sit at the mic, just in case, we need a, you know, a state context. Just in case.
It's okay?
Just go around?
Should we go around, or should we?
All right. Thanks for the info. I did have a question for Chelsea, um, which was, and a lot of those data points, I noticed there was a real difference in the percentage between genders, and I'm wondering if that's, you know, um, something that you've seen statewide? Or is that maybe because Rockport's smaller, and we have smaller cohorts?
Sure. Sorry, I'm not used to speaking into a mic. It's, this isn't Rock, just Rockport, that we're seeing gender differences. Obviously, I work in Gloucester, I work in seven communities, but I'm housed in Gloucester, so Ipswich, Manchester, Essex, Rockport, Gloucester, Beverly, and Danvers. And everyone's kind of on a different schedule for the Youth Health Survey, but from what we've seen from past implementation, and then some of the data coming out for current this year, there, there is a lot higher, there's, there's a, um, there are disparities in gender, as well as race, ethnicity, and sexual orientation. I think because Rockport is so small, um, there isn't a demographic breakdown of sexual orientation and gender identity that includes, like, gender nonconforming students, because of protecting confidentiality. The, um, John Snow, Inc., who's the public health consulting firm that analyzes data, for any number of students that's below ten, they, they don't report those numbers, because it's so small, like, individuals could potentially be identified. With that being said, I think we, we do see gender dis... With that being said, I think we, we do see gender disparities, race disparities, ethnicity disparities and sexual orientation disparities with LGBTQ plus students, females and students of color having higher, in general, higher rates of mental health issues and lower rates of connectedness. So it's not just Rockport.
Thank you.
Is that data, I understand the public nature of protecting that less than ten. Is that data accessible to the educator, educational leaders so that they can take care of those populations? I, I totally understand the statistical reason for not presenting it.
Individual students are not, I mean, there's, that, that information is not collected. So no, like individuals can't be identified through this.
Let me ask a better question. Do they, are they, do they identify as non-binary, gender fluid, nonconforming in the survey?
Yeah, that is, those are categories that students can select.
So I guess what's important is we do know who many of those students are, if, if they allow us into that world. And in that case, it might be helpful from an educational standpoint for us to meet the needs of kids. So I understand the public nature of not presenting it, but I'm just curious if it is information that can be disseminated internally with the counseling team and the leadership team to make sure we're taking care of kids that we know.
Yeah, that's a great question. Also, no, there's, I don't want to speak for Rockport, but there might be screening tools. I think you mentioned SOS that is used in the schools as well. So that's like another way to identify students who may be at risk.
That's okay, no, it's good.
Well, and there are some, there are some slides, and I don't want to speak too confidently because I don't know which slides there are. But I remember when we were reviewing some, that there were some categories such as that that were identified that actually we were, were positively different than the state, where we were like, wow, actually, most of our LGBTQ plus students actually feel safe in the school if you looked at the subcategories versus actually some students who aren't, which I remember you saying, that's actually not normal, like that's actually a really good thing for Rockport. So again, in the full report, and certainly I could, we could look, but we just reviewed that a couple of weeks ago. And there, so it is statistically in there for some things. So it's not that it's so small that it's never reported. There, there was information on that for our population.
A lot of positive data around students of color in certain categories as well.
Yes, you're right, yeah. In terms of like, yeah, I think it was belonging and safety, yeah.
And then I had one more, I guess, question or more of a comment for, for Amy and Jody and, and Mark as well. You mentioned a lot about different outreach to, to students, to community, to parents. I guess I'd just like to, to, you know, remind everyone that, you know, I think we need to also remember about the staff too. Specifically, I was thinking about with the adult connections question. I know there's some really good professional development out there and different protocols for, for staff and student connections as well. So I think that'd be really important to, to put on the radar for future professional development days. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you to everyone who helped put the data together. And it's really great to have these partnerships across the Board of Health and our regional entities and our schools. So that's great, thank you so much. And I remember us trying to kind of get this off the ground originally, and I'm so happy that it's happening. What was, sort of came to my mind was, I was thinking about the new health and wellness standards that have sort of recently come out. And do you think that this will be helpful? Or how can we incorporate the information that we have from this into our curriculum? Or how do we dovetail the new health and wellness standards with sort of the information that we got from this?
Well, I think Mark met with the wellness, that was the Wellness Committee today. But we do have a committee, and maybe Jody can speak to this more than I can. But with the new standards, with the curriculum for the health and wellness, we have a fairly new health teacher at the high school, middle high school, who is excited to begin the work. But last year, it was a little bit purposely paused and put on hold because we hadn't had enough chance to really dig through the new standards and have the data. He's already asked us for all this data information and actually asked if he can start looking at it within his classes. So I think he's really excited to use it and excited to be able to connect the new standards with all this and do it in a really purposeful way, starting in sixth grade, which will be wonderful. Jody, I don't know if you've been a part of any conversations.
Yeah, as we've talked about in the past, that department is now a department and they have time to meet together pre-K to twelve once a month. They've worked really hard to really look into the standards. Mark and I just did a deep dive into the standards as well to look at the language around all of these different areas so that we can help support the teaching staff. And they are still going out to professional development that's being provided for free by people who are connected with Desi. And their next step is they want to look at some components, some programming, some resources to help them teach the topics that they're not as well-versed in teaching from the past that are new in the standard. So there's a lot of time and effort going into this, but it is, it is definitely a work in progress.
Well, again, thank you for digging through all this. I mean, it's hard also. I remember the first time reading through this, a couple, the first couple of years ago. It's hard even seeing some of the answers when it's just one percent because there are students. And to know that some of our students are having a hard time, and we can guess that, but sometimes it's hard to read this. So we know that the school already has stuff, but I'm curious about the Board of Health because I don't sit on the Board of Health. How does this information kind of affect how the school and the Board of Health work together? Or is this a, a new thing because it's only the second time we've done this? Not to put you on the spot, I'm just kidding.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
So actually, we use this. We use the Community Health Needs Assessment that's done through the hospital for adults, for patients. And we use this youth survey as well in developing our goals. Also, in how we used our funding, like we helped to fund this. We also have some opioid initiatives that we're funding as well through the state. So we use that in our, in our goal development. I know Nicole and I have had discussion about membership on the, your Health and Wellness Committee that you're developing and some of those resources. And obviously, you know, Jessie and Paul and a few folks on the regional side really play into it as well. So we definitely use the survey going forward. And if there are other partnerships that we can work with you on, we will definitely do that. It's definitely in our wheelhouse.
And I will just say what's been so comforting for me as a school leader is are the people in this room's message routinely as we go through this data, but also as we utilize them for resources, that this is a community problem. It's not just a Rockport high school problem. I mean, if you look at the data across the state, every school in the state has similar data or even more significant data in multiple categories. And I'm not saying that to justify it, I'm saying that it's, it's a, it is a problem, you know, not just a school problem. It's a community problem. And how we can support the kids is really, it's been comforting to know that we have a community who cares so much because Rockport is a little bit the end of the earth. So even when I was a counselor, trying, I just remember trying to get people to see students is hard in Rockport because we're kind of at the end of the earth and we don't have as many agencies who are available to support kids as they do even just twenty minutes in, in Salem and Beverly and things like that. So these partnerships have been essential and really valuable to us to think about how, a bigger lens of how to support kids outside of school, as well as in school, of course.
And the co-board is different.
Yeah.
You know, we end up in the Board of Health having the same sort of discussion. You know, what might work at Beverly, what might work in Gloucester, isn't going to work in Rockport. You know, those sorts of comparisons, we need to make sure that, yes, we're looking at them, but we also need to say, you know what, what's local for us and what's going to work for us is really the action plan we need to develop. And we go through that all the time because, you know, with all the data we look at, there ends up being the same sort of comparison and better, worse, this or that. And we have to be cautious about that, that we don't generalize.
Yeah, it really is great to see the support from everybody for this, for this topic. It's really great to see everybody coming together for this, thank you.
I'm thinking about the students who are on the field trip the day that the survey was given. How many students were not able to take this survey?
Mark, if you go back to slide two. In the eleventh grade, twenty-five out of forty-two took it.
Seventeen. Seventeen kids didn't take it.
So our participation rates ranged from sixty percent to eighty-six percent.
Ninety-seven in the eighth grade.
Thank you. Were there accommodations made for students with disabilities to help them read and understand the questions?
Yes, the seventh and the eighth grade students took them in the classroom in smaller groups with a teacher there to support them. The ninth through eleventh were with Mrs. King and I. And we were available to answer any questions and help support through any struggles that they might have had. Not many asked. In twenty twenty-two, a lot asked, we read a lot of questions, we helped them understand what they meant. But this being the second time they did it, not as many asked for help. And the seniors, I believe, were with guidance counselors who would have been able to support them. Yeah, the graduations, the twelfth graders who were gone.
I ask these questions because our numbers are so very small. And the discrepancy between boys and girls in the data is enormous. Sixty-five girls and one hundred and twenty-five boys, that's quite a gap. And the math teachers might want to help, but I believe that ten percent in a population of sixty-five is different from ten percent in a population of a hundred and twelve.
One other thing to note is it's, it's voluntary. So anybody who chooses not to answer does not have to answer. And they, they do this on their phones mostly. So if somebody's on their phone just doing something else during it, we don't prompt them to please do the survey because it's voluntary.
And, and so when I hear us saying that this data is very, very important and it's something that we can use as we write grants, my last question is what process we have to try to go through to decide whether we think this data, these data are valid?
I think that's a hu, a huge point, and I also think educating the kids more, at least from my perspective, on how we're using the data, taking it seriously, what the questions mean, how we're using it. It's not about pinpointing any one of them, it truly is anonymous, it truly is for good intent, like to provide educational resources, we want them to be honest, all those things. I think in the seventh and eighth grade, they're able to do that a little better because they do it in small advisory type groups and at the high school, at least the two years we've done it. The other thing is the timing, is it's happened to be like June graduation week, you know, end of May. It's crazy at the high school. So I think sometimes their brains are maybe not as focused on it as it would be if we did it in the fall and we were really thoughtful about it. And we've actually talked about that because once you, once you do it at a time, there's value in being consistent with that time because students' mental health may be very different in May and June versus October. But we did talk about how it could be valuable to talk about switching that timeline or maybe even just pushing it up earlier in the spring so that we're not getting into that crazy like we're just trying to get these surveys done and leave for summer.
It's like, I do think that we can plan better. With all of the MCAS testing, it's really hard to squish this in. So that's what we've done, we've put it in at the very end when they're still maybe taking the biology exam, which now the physics exam. So I do think that we can plan better to make sure it's done more in small groups. With the new schedule, with the wind blocks, it'll be much easier to do this in very small groups and get some more consistent data out of it.
I also think there's a point of discussion around calibration, which I think is where you're trying to go to. So at, once we have this information, so whether or not ten or fifteen kids weren't here, it doesn't mean, so take statistical analysis outside of it, it doesn't mean that the data we collected from those who were present isn't meaningful, it's incredibly meaningful. So I do think now that we are starting to educate ourselves as adults and educators around the benefits of PLCs, planning time for teachers and counselors to come together and talk about students by name and need, wind blocks, assemblies, advisor-advisee programs, those are opportunities to use the data in a really authentic way with a small group of seven or eight kids and say, hey, this is what we heard from the survey. And really hold either formal or informal focus group conversations with kids in those safe groups. And so somebody could say, hey, Henry, what do you really think about this data in a safe setting? And it'd be fascinating to hear the student voices come in and say, well, yeah, I actually agree with that, or I don't, or I can see how other students feel that way, even though I might not. I think there's a real value to gaining that qualitative perspective and the student voice particularly. And so I think we're going to get better at using this information authentically with students and not just from a statistical way to, to impact programming. And is that, that's, I think that's a fair assumption for some of the work we spend doing for the past year and a half to try, particularly middle school, I still, to really try to look at our schedules and our shared time with kids.
I really think it's only valuable if we do that. You know, like any data, any survey isn't going to give us all the information we need and, and I hope to bring it back to the students because I, they're, they're just wonderful in terms of giving their thoughts and perspective and they're so insightful. So I think them being able to see this and give their perspective and own it will be the most powerful part of having the survey data, honestly.
Hi, I just had a question about the bullying. I noticed that the percentages of the in-person versus the electronic weren't as different as I thought they would be. I would have thought the electronic bullying would be a much higher of a percentage. Was there anything on there that showed if those were overlapping? Like if it was the same students that were having both of those issues? Or if they were completely separate?
We could ask for that data. So John Snow, Inc., again, is a public health firm that analyzes and put together these reports. But there is some ability to ask them for follow-up information. So we could ask them for that data and say, can you show us a correlation between students who reported in-person and students who reported cyberbullying? So we don't have that at the moment, but we could get it.
I have another question related to that one, which is, do, do you have access to data that's more granular than this? For instance, the mental health data that we've been presented with tonight tells us the number of students who said they don't feel well all of the time, much of the time, or some of the time. Which responses you choose to present will really influence what the number is you get. Do you, as an administrative team, have the ability to know how, what percentage of your students said all of the time?
No. I think, again, I think that's something that could be asked for.
But we'd have to ask, we'd have to, we're not presented with that, we, we have to ask.
Typically, John Snow will present like a standard with the schools that they work with. They kind of have a standard data set that they put together with the ability to go back and say, you know, we met with the school committee, they had some follow-up questions. Could you show us this more specific data around these data points? And they are able to do that. They are really responsive.
So I would just urge our administrators to ask a lot of questions so that you get that kind of data that you really want on the questions that you feel are most important. You can't tackle every single thing, and this is an enormous amount of information, but there are some where perhaps you might like a little more detail. And so I would encourage people to speak up and ask the consulting company to break the data down a little more. Some of these, you might really just want to have a clearer picture about.
So thank you, Board of Health, thank you to our regional consultants and professionals. Thank you for the administrative team, thank you to the teachers and the staff who've put up a lot of time and effort into supporting our students' abilities to take the survey and then who will respond to the data, hopefully in a really meaningful, authentic way to just make our community stronger internally and externally. So I really appreciate the time and the effort that goes into it. And again, no different than when we talk about other standardized type testing, it is one data point of many. And we have to pull all of this information together in the life of students to try to figure out how we can make tomorrow better than today for each individual. So that's, it's, it's important work and I appreciate everybody's efforts. We have Rebecca Macy, Rebecca, if you don't mind just waving. Oh, Henry, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, I apologize. I had a few questions as a student about the data. One thing was, how would the school policies be affected from, would they be affected from these datas? Like, for example, like, like the substance abuse or like the bullying? Would that like cause for new policies or policy changes?
So some of the things are guided by the state, right? So certain things around drug, drugs in school, alcohol, there's laws around those that are pretty pretty strict and clear. And same thing with bullying, there are laws around that. So there are certain things that were guided by the state to do, and we don't have as much flexibility on. Certain things like vaping, obviously bullying prevention and working with students through restorative approaches before it escalates to significant bullying. All this data is going to give us good information to do more proactive, hopefully thoughtful work around how we can reduce those things from happening in the first place. And like we said, vaping, we've gone full circle with more punitive measures of it to more restorative, but then a part of that is like, there really needs to be ongoing education because when people are addicted to things like that, it's not necessarily a, you know, one restorative detention and you're healed and you'll never do it again. It's really a much more comprehensive approach, which we don't have the resources for necessarily within a school setting. So this is where these community partnerships are essential. So it does change the way we look at things, and we have changed some of our policies, you know, around some of the discipline stuff that we've done, but then there are bigger, you know, above us because we're a state institution that we don't have as much control over when it comes to drugs, alcohol, bullying, violence, things like that.
And policies and practices are totally different too, right? So the school committee governs a public school district with policies. That's the only place where policy comes from. Then the school district, the organization, has practices, protocols, and all of the how underneath. So really, this data impacts the how and the why, very, very importantly, quite honestly. Sometimes there's kind of a backwards design where we have this information, we start to make headway on the ground, and then that comes back to the policy subcommittee, and we work with a consultant to make tweaks to those policies based on our local information gathering. Does that make sense?
Another question, Henry?
No, no. One more was like for, when we did the, when we participated in the test, I believe we did it in the assembly setting where everyone was like encouraged to do it, like heavily encouraged to do it, like, and we were, like, we were kind of held in like a, like setting where like everyone was like supposed to be like silent and we were not supposed to disclose our results or our situations. So I was just curious about how like, if we were meant to like kind of share our difficulties like with other students, if not?
That's a great question. I, I think for the purposes of the survey, and again, I didn't administer those because I was down doing graduation rehearsal. Ms. Goodhue and Ms. King, I know, were there. And I think when it's be silent and be confidential, it's because they really want you to be able to be honest and not feel like your responses are going to be shared or, you know, viewed publicly amongst your peers. And so there's, there's definitely need for confidentiality in those taking of the surveys. I think where it's powerful and where we hope to explore student voice will be sharing some of the overall data. And then if there are students who are, you know, feeling brave and really want to share stories or talk to each other about what's happening, then we'll have open dialogue around that. I think for the survey purposes, it was more like you can feel free to be confidential in a safe space and not have to share that information then. Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Great.
Great job, everybody.
Great. Thank you all for being here. Appreciate it. 55% of the ninth graders say that that says, but only 10% of the 12th graders.
Career motivated at that point. So Rebecca Macy, Rebecca, if you don't mind just giving a quick wave, Rebecca's sitting in the second row back there. In your drive, you have a really nice two-page that Rebecca put together originally as like a public comment, but we were talking before the meeting just to make sure, we wanted to make sure we know who Rebecca is and that she knows that she is a professional who lives in the community, who has a real passion and professional connection to this work. Being an instructor over at Mass College of Pharmacy, shout out to my father, who was an alumni from Mass College of Pharmacy. So I just think it's important to recognize that we have these formal relationships within our community, and then we have a lot of informal relationships as well, some really talented people in the community who, who want to help. So I do know that as we put together our wellness committee, as we look to extend offers to community members to, to, to help us and so we can lean on their knowledge. I appreciate Rebecca sharing the community guide around this work and her background and the topics in this particular memo are on opioid abatement funds, substance use and prevention opportunities. And I, I just want publicly to let you know that we anticipate taking advantage of Rebecca's professional interest and skill sets at some point when it's appropriate. So thank, I really appreciate you coming out tonight and sitting in.
Right, thank you. Okay, so next we'll move into communication advocacy. I get that right?
You do. So I've been holding some props because anything from teaching, when you hand out the props, the students stop paying attention to what they're supposed to be paying attention to. So I have three folders. I'll just send them in different directions. My bad provisioning. And so, yeah, go that way and this way, and then we can keep sharing, and then you and I can look. So another big shout out to Lori McNiff in central office, who has been working hard on components of this initiative. Let me just switch slide decks while I'm talking here. And so. There it is, sorry. So one of the things we're talking about is trying to get a community newsletter out to really start to communicate more transparently and around areas the school committee and the leadership team feel is super important. So Lori's been working with a local publisher to put together some draft models for you all. So as you pass them around tonight, clearly there's no real language and pictures in here, but I wanted you to see that we kind of have three different options that we're looking at. And so really, as silly as it seems, the options are basically based on the paper and the size of the font, and we're trying to make educated decisions based on who our constituencies are and how we want to get this out. The second thing I'm going to pass out for you to take a look at tonight is a draft of a postcard that we would like to send out pretty soon, actually. So it's, it's a quick coming soon. We're kind of looking at the save the date model, right? So it's a quick coming soon that we would like to send out to all households and businesses in Rockport to let them know that this is going to be a new communication tool that we're using and to try to solicit, because it's a nonprofit effort, to try to solicit advertisers for the newsletter so that we can create a budget, so to speak, for our communication and outreach. And so these are, I know we had a question about who was doing the work and how quickly it was moving forward. It's moving forward pretty quickly. The next steps will be, and I think we can take care of this tonight, Madam Chair, the next steps will be to talk about putting together a subcommittee with two members who will then meet with me and Lori regularly to start to execute some of this work and put some finishing touches around this, and also to have that subcommittee work with me and the leadership team around larger components of the advocacy work within the greater community. While this is a nice shift, it's only one tool of many that we really need to take advantage of. And so I think, I think what I'd like to do is make sure tonight that we have a good conversation around MASC because many of us went to targeted sessions around communication and advocacy. And so for Nicole and Mark and I, I think all of us would like to share publicly with the committee some of our takeaways and how they directly connect to this second bullet around actionable steps for long-term advocacy. So I think if we talk about MASC for a few minutes and then come back to that second bullet and talk about taking action with the subcommittee, that might be a really nice use of our time right now. So I don't know if you guys want to go first, and I'll close, but.
I want to thank Mark for sort of, Mark Branco, for sort of getting the school committee on board with attending this statewide conference that's for the Massachusetts Association of School Committees and Mass Association of Superintendents. And we kind of live in our silos, especially way out here on Cape Town, and it's really one of our only opportunities to go and meet with people of other school districts, to talk to other school committees, to kind of listen to best practices and broaden our view and not get so hung up on our little piece of the world, although. So I went to two things. One was the division meeting for Division One, which we are part of, Northeast Division, and that's everywhere from, I want to say, Tewksbury and Lawrence and, you know, and then all of us here on sort of Cape Town, Manchester, Beverly's, part of it, Danvers, the whole Northeast, which was great to talk to other school committee members. And one of my biggest takeaways from that is I am so thankful for our district and the relationship that we have with our teachers, with our administrators, the school committee superintendent, and I came away from that extremely, extremely thankful. I was lucky enough to get to see Chris Horan for the second time. Mark and I went to a presentation about community outreach and how to communicate, you know, with your community who may or may not have kids in the school system or be part of the school system and how important that is. I think this dovetails really well into sort of our new subcommittee. He talked about just sort of different things that have happened around the state, including in some bigger communities. He talked about having community conversations where you're sort of in small groups and you're having maybe a school committee member or an administrator facilitate these small little groups, and maybe you're having a conversation about something that's not the hot button issue indirectly tied to a vote. Maybe you're talking about music education, or maybe you're talking about STEM, or maybe you're talking about, so it doesn't have to be always the hot button issue. It could just be having a conversation about things that are, you know, important to the schools. He's talking a lot about listening, which we can all sort of, the difference between listening and waiting to speak, just so hard. And I think, like, I struggle with that. We all struggle with that. You know what you want to say and truly listening. But he had some great things to say about sort of how to engage. I know in the past, we have sort of done those listening sessions. A couple of years ago, we all went out to Brothers Brew in the library. My library session, Amy was the nice, was our visitor, which was very nice of her, but talked about different ways to think about that, like going out to existing groups instead of asking. You can still have those, it's always great to be in Brothers Brew and open it up and have people come that want to come, but going to Rotary, going to the senior center, which I know Amy's maybe done in the past with some students, I feel like I remembered that. But sort of different ways to reach out and kind of shaking up what we're doing and thinking differently about it. He talked about reporting out when listening is done. So if you're having a listening session or you go to Brothers Brew or you go to Rotary or whatever, sort of giving that feedback so the community knows that you went out and you listened and then sort of reporting back what you heard. And this is a great venue to do that. So it could be in a school committee meeting, it could be in the smore, but this newsletter is a perfect place to sort of be doing that and letting people knowing that we're listening. And then the last thing, which I always love a good road show, going to the farmer's market, going to Harvest Fest, being at the motif, you know, the 5K, all of those things in sort of a more organized way. And just being available to talk with that school committee members or whoever that is, just being sort of available and out in the community and having people always know like, oh, the Viking pride table is going to be at all these different events, and I'll have the opportunity to just chat and ask questions or whatever. So he was great, Chris Horan, and I think he might be a person in the future that we might be interested to have at, if we have another school committee retreat.
Or work with the subcommittee.
Or work with the subcommittee, so. Although I, I think the whole committee could benefit from hearing from him, but, yeah. So that was, it was great.
Yeah, it's interesting how much of what you said. You know, I saw the same thing in the sessions I went to. So I attended three sessions. First one was revolving around problem solving and decision-making, and the other two were more strictly focused on communication. I think my big takeaway from the sessions I was at is that we are on the right track with our strategies and goals, absolutely. There were, you know, many, many districts there that I felt like were asking more questions that maybe we were asking a year ago. And so I feel like we're ahead of a lot of where a lot of other districts are. So my takeaway was we're in a very good position. I really like where we're headed and what we're doing and just with, you know, these journals and the, the note card, I think is great. Similar to what you were saying, Nicole, a lot of, you know, ideas about the communication is that there's not one method that's going to work. It's a lot of different things, you know, social media, the in-person, similar going to different groups, you know, the outreach, maybe even having videos, you know, some really targeted things. So lots of different things. And to really remember the relationships as we do with the other boards in town, which I think, you know, we all remember that, but that's not the case with, with every district. And I think we have a healthy relationship with everyone. And also to really enlist teachers and parent groups in that communication is so, so important. That's, I think, one of the biggest points to remember. Another thing that I believe we're doing really well that was reiterated in both sessions about the communication was, was to be transparent, which, which we are, and to really have a story to tell. So have a story that you want to focus on and kind of just whatever message you're sending out, just kind of repeat that story or that narrative over and over again. And I, I feel like that's what we're, we're really leading up to here, so, so it feels really good.
So I actually went back and reordered my notes in order of importance because I didn't know who was going to steal my thunder here, so by letting you guys go first. So the thread through three or four of the sessions that I attended was really strong around having a purposeful narrative that includes a story arc, where we are, where we've been, where we are, where we're headed, and making sure that you continue to control your message. And my takeaway as I went around to sessions and did a lot of listening in between sessions and hallways is the districts that are struggling in their communities have let somebody else take the story over. And they're telling the stories in their local papers, on other people's websites, in Facebook pages that are anti or not supportive of public education or the local. And so the biggest takeaway I took from session after session was the strong organizations are controlling their message, being transparent, telling the truth, and telling success stories about adults and children in their school districts. And so I think that has to be at the forefront of what we do. The second big takeaway is to get ahead of any major ask or any major partnership that you're going to be looking for from your community. Don't wait until the nth hour to then make a bunch of signs and run around town and beg and to really be strategic. And I think that's why voting on a subcommittee tonight is going to be so important, to make sure that the leadership team has capacity to do that work with you and for you in a purposeful way. Handouts, QR codes, hard copy paper, digital streams, videos, appearances on local TV, all methodologies that we will roll into when working with the subcommittee, that all, all different things I heard from, from different sessions that I went to, making sure communication is accessible, making sure you make your message clear that we're in, we're in the business of kids, we're not in the business of brick and mortar. Let's stop talking about the schools. Let's start talking about the human beings in the buildings. Let's talk about our students and our staff. And change, it's not semantics, it's purposeful. And I think if we can take that message and tweak it, it's going to be important. I took a lot of notes around community conversations as well, and again, making that purposeful, so it's not just like a no request Friday, right? But that you really have a purposeful way of getting messages out and targeting the right people with the right message so that they feel like they're partners of yours. And this term that I'm definitely going to steal, and I didn't write down whose session it was in, critical ambassadors, right? Who are the critical ambassadors within your community that are there for you and that you know, not just your philanthropists, but the people who have social capital and who really support public education and who value having a multi-generational community? Who are those people in the community that we're going to partner with for the long haul? So I apologize for being long-winded. It was one of the better three days of learning that I've had in a while when I go out to conferences. It was, there was a lot of really good information. And Mark, you kind of said it like, it's almost therapeutic sadly when you go out and you look around and you listen to other people's struggles or other people's missteps, and you realize, well, yeah, for all of our missteps, we're, we still at least have a focused direction and relatively speaking, a team approach to the work we're doing within the community. And that is clearly not the case in a lot of places right now. So thank you to the committee members that could go. It's, it's a fun opportunity, and again, it shows, you know, shoulder-to-shoulder leadership when we all show up down there together. So I really appreciate your time and efforts. So I don't know if you want to lead a conversation around the subcommittee. So I don't know if you want to lead a conversation around the subcommittee?
I will, I did want to ask about this.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sure. Visual aids. Are we all looking at the same thing? Because I know that in this, there's just one.
Right. So there's three versions that I handed out. I just have the originals of all with the price points in them. And the only difference, let me rephrase that, two differences are glossy versus non-glossy. And then the hard copies, the solid has a, they're just a little smaller. So when Lori and I have gone through this from a usability standpoint, knowing that we have, what I heard was the, you know, second oldest community in the Commonwealth with a lot of our constituents being, you know, above the age of 50, I, I think about, and I'm above the age of 50, so I think about large font and, you know, all of, right?
Really?
I, I know it's hard to believe when I present, but I do. So I, so I do think that's going to be important. So I really just wanted you tonight to take a look at it and let you know that I think what will happen is Lori and I will probably, with your blessing, move forward with a design. And then what the subcommittee is really going to do is start to work with the leadership team and Lori and I on what the actual components of this thing are, right? So we saw one from Shrewsbury during our retreat, but I've now seen a whole bunch of different ones. And I just closed my phone, so I will reopen that. Alumni spotlights, student spotlights, staff spotlights, curricular spotlights, financial spotlights. Yeah, it's going to, it's going to hit, it's going to hit, if we're doing a fall, a winter, and a spring summer, normally that would be middle to end of October, if we had started in the summer, right? Middle to end of October, then you do middle to end of February, then you do June after graduation. And it happens three times a year. So I'm looking at a really aggressive target to say, can we come out with a February one? Kind of in a timely manner, because that's typically when the draft budget book gets approved here at the school committee. And so if that becomes the public document and this becomes a first version of our public story, I think that'll be a really powerful connection and different ways to get to the community. So really, what I'm just hoping for is you give me a little feedback on and off camera around the documents themselves. And really, are you, give, sort of give us the green light tonight on finalizing this. So if you're writing on this and you have questions about this, I would absolutely like to hear those tonight, just so I have some clarity.
Do, my question is, I know we're, are we, our goal is to pay for it through ads?
Yep.
Is that, will, the amount of ad revenue that comes in, the amount of people that buy, sort of dictate which version we may go with?
No.
Do we anticipate that it will be completely paid for by ads?
That's the hope. Yep. I think this community will step up fast. Yep.
I have the most mundane suggestions, but my suggestions are things like, let's make sure that every single thing we send out always has a date on it, which is pretty easy. And we trust you and your team to choose the paper. We don't need to do that at this level.
Try to be inclusive.
Thank you. But I, I trust you to do all that stuff. And I just want to reiterate how important I think this is. And we have a number of people in the room. It's so important that we work together over the next 12 to 18 months to make sure that our community understands the good work that's happening in our school system and that people have a very clear understanding of our financial situation. It's our goal to do the very best we can for students and for staff. And we know that there will come a time in the future when we will need the community to step forward and help again. And it's so important that we lay the groundwork and build the relationships now that we will need to tap when that time comes. So I really, really appreciate the effort and the attention. And somebody is just a really smart graphic designer. That helps too. But I really appreciate this work, and I think it's very important, not, not just for us, but for our teachers, our staff, and our students. It's really important for kids that we do this.
Agreed.
Are you going to hand me your notes after?
Oh, sure.
I can see them.
The one thing that I learned about newsletters is that, and I don't know if this applies to schools, because I don't work in a school, if you're going to be presenting to people, make sure it fits into a folder. That, you know, one of those kind of folders, if that's not what you do, take it and toss it in the trash can. But it is...
So it will when it's, because it's a...
If you fold it, okay.
It's, when this gets folded, that's where the stamp goes on, and that's how it goes out to every, that's how it goes out to every household and every business.
Well, that'll fit. That'll fit nicely. I was just worried. I like the big print myself. So, so we have been talking about a communication advocacy subcommittee. We're trying not to over-subcommittee the committee because that gets a lot of committees. But this is important. This is, this is our big goal this year. And, and the committee, the subcommittee is not going to be working alone, creating this by themselves. Obviously, already we have a great, look how far it has moved along without a subcommittee. But it is also organizing and decision-making. And then the rest of us, of course, are there to support with either articles, ideas, staffing, whatever we decide to do. But this is sort of like the point group that will lead this charge. I would like to make a recommendation. May?
Yep.
Is that the best way to do it?
Yeah, make a recommendation for two, to get, I hope to get recommendations for two people to serve in a subcommittee. Hopefully those two people say they're willing to do that. And then somebody, somebody makes a motion to make that happen.
Okay.
With a second and a vote.
Okay. So my recommendation for, to chair the communication advocacy group, subcommittee is Amy Oaks. I think that she has great, you know, has great ideas and a lot of interest in that. So, and, and then also Jess has said that she is willing to also sit on the subcommittee as well. At this point, do we take a motion for?
Yep, if the committee's okay with both of those recommendations.
Any other?
So moved.
So moved, second?
Second.
Second. I'll second it. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. That was a little clumsy, but we got through it.
All right.
That's awesome.
My office will send an email to the new subcommittee. We'll start working. So thank you very much. This agenda is such a mess that I'm, let me just collect my thoughts and figure out where we are next.
Capital improvement?
So we're going to look at capital. Yes, thank you very much. Hold on. It's way out of order now. There we go. Okay. So similar to last year's format, I just wanted you to have the overarching cheat sheet that we submitted to Town Hall probably a couple weeks back now. So I want to thank Kirk and June for doing the heavy lift around this work and really looking at the needs. This year, it really was extremely facilities-based, which really is the intent usually of capital. But in the past, you know, we've been able to get cafeteria tables and a few other niceties. Not that a table's a nicety, but in the big scheme of a roof, I suppose it is. But we are in a, you know, situation where we have the buildings we have, and we have to keep taking care of them. And this is one of the few outlets that we have to do this. So I'll just step you through this. We were asked to priority rank our asks. We were asked to provide lots of detail. So the full packet that went to Town Hall has lots of detail. If we have to put it out to bid, we got price quotes to justify the estimated cost based on those quotes. So I won't read everything to you. I'll just give the quick commercial highlights that the elementary school is in really, really in need of upgrades in the unit ventilators. So those will be, that's a very expensive project, almost two, you know, a little over $250,000. And this is a multi-phase, multi-year ask. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So we, this, this is just phase one of this. And you'll see in the narrative here that we're talking about one section. Phase one had addressed G Wing. We're going to continue with phase two with H Wing at the elementary school. And then phase three will complete the project by focusing on F Wing. So in a two to three-year rollout, provided that the capital money keeps coming from the town in a similar fashion, we'll put that school in pretty good shape when it comes to that. And I'll just slow down in between each one of them if you have thoughts on any of these. But fire alarm system replacement, again, it's really not negotiable, right? So we have to replace our outdated elementary fire alarm control panel. The parts are no longer available. And so I won't read all of these descriptions because I don't know what half of them mean. But the short version of this is we have to, we've already replaced and relocated one piece. The current model doesn't have replacement parts, needs to be relocated, and that works about $40,000. And clearly, we have to make sure that fire alarm system is operational and, and updated as quickly as possible.
Can I go back to the first one?
Of course.
I forgot to ask. That's two, 253 for phase one, two, and three? All the phases?
Phase two?
Phase one was last year when we did the kindergarten, the kindergarten area. So this is just for, this is a cost for next year for one section.
Okay.
And each year, the price will change depending on what areas we're covering.
And probably not go down.
Yeah. And then, so, and then when we head over to the elementary, the middle high school again, there would be a jump again.
Right.
And then another phase is your, the green team had already funded some smaller areas of, in the auditorium of the middle high school. So we're just finishing off. So this has been a town focus since 2017.
Okay.
When the green team decided this was a priority. It's been compared to our current system with music, listening to music on an eight-track. That's, that's what we were told. It, I've seen it. Kirk showed it. And it's, it's actually quite interesting. He can call up on his laptop and look at an individual room and see how the air quality is. And which then, and it's fascinating what, what you can do and how targeted you can get. And I, I think it's time that we do this.
But I'm glad you asked about the phases, because it is important for people to know that we're asking for $250,000 just for one section of this project.
It is just one section.
Yeah. Outdoor post lighting, if you've been on the campus at the middle high school, you know it's probably one of the darker places in town, and it really shouldn't be. And again, I don't know if it was mood lighting, old, modern at the time. Again, not an electrician or lighting expert, but it's not good. Let's put it that way in layman's terms. So we're going to have our in-house personnel install and replace the pole lights throughout the campus. Contractor will come in and replace lighting in the middle high school parking lot. It's not effective at all based on the age of the components and the materials to just keep tinkering and trying to repair the units. So that's a, just over $10,000. Lucky to sneak it in over $10,000 because the, every project that you go, put through capital has to be a minimum of $10,000 on its own. So it is just over the threshold. And so we're happy to have a better lit campus whenever this app takes place. Priority four is going to be continuing and I believe finishing, the, finishing the blind replacements across the entire campus. So this has been ongoing for...
Two years.
Two years now, right? So window blinds, really in most non-classroom areas is what we have to finish up. I think we have a couple, couple areas where kids are still engaged in learning opportunities. But generally speaking, this is the majority of the non-classroom areas, so that we have all the standardized shades. They tie to our safety and security plans. They tie to our efficiencies because they're not the blinds that tilt and let air in and out. They, they have an insulation factor to them. And I'm learning a lot more about blinds than I ever thought I would in my adult life, actually. So that's priority four. Priority five is a gator with a plow and sander attachments. We really rely on the DPW at times to bail us out when it comes to snow and ice removal. And it's a small town with small capacity when it comes to employees and, and labor and equipment. So we do purchase some of our own equipment, and we do have our own teams who can start the parking lots and the sidewalks. And so we're just looking to upgrade with a new John Deere or a similar product with a plow and sander attachment so that our staff can try to get ahead of storms and snow and ice removal before relying on DPW so that they can get streets and sidewalks cleared and neighborhoods taken care of and security access for fire and police.
And the gator's multipurpose.
Right.
So it can be used to transport equipment and materials from building to building for the grounds all the way out to the softball field instead of, so, and I realized that we don't, last year's snow, if you would be like, why are we doing this with so little snow? That's just the, the extra bonus of it. This gator will be used year-round.
Yep.
And not just necessarily the maintenance and custodial staff could use it. I mean, if technology needed to use it, or the science had a project out in the field, you know, someone could get this stuff out there for them. So it has a lot of great purposes.
The sander can spread fertilizer. We do have a natural, we do have a natural, natural to our field in the back.
That helps the athletic department.
Yeah. So again, not, not as expensive as some of these other asks, but an important one. This last one is on here as priority six, but we know it's, it's basically an FYI for FY27.
Correct.
Many more of our interior doors, particularly at the middle high school, are really problematic as, whether they're, the frames aren't good, they're not swinging clearly. In some cases, the fire magnets and fire door releases are problematic. And so we have workarounds that are legal, but that we have to use. And ultimately, you know, it's expensive. I was in a conversation with Monte just yesterday. I'm not going to throw out a fake number, but I've heard everywhere from $25,000 to $40,000 for one full door replacement. It's a fascinatingly expensive piece of equipment, so to speak, to, to replace, particularly in an envelope where you already have a building that's made, right? We're not, you've, everything's got to fit the, the structure that we have here. So we wanted the, the capital improvement planning committee to see this basically a year ahead of time, because that's a large chunk of money. And these aren't even all the doors that we have to do, I believe. Off the top of my head, these are just the main concerns, the highest level concerns that we've identified at this point in time. And that's 137.5.
For that one year, and it probably will be a two-year project.
Right, right. So excluding the door project, the total ask that we've put in front of the capital team is just over $350,000. Generally speaking, we've kind of hovered around $350,000, give or take.
Last few years, yes.
Right? And, and that has been approved. So we feel pretty strongly that this is a number that, that will get approved, barring any changes. If you remember last year, we came back to you three months later and had to pull three things off and add something because the roof or something.
The roof, the fire alarm, maybe?
So it goes to the capital improvement planning committee. They put it through, and then they make a recommendation to town meeting, and it goes to town meeting floor as part of the overall budget. Yeah. So again, just so the people watching or who are new to this process know, none of this work happens this year. This whole thing doesn't get approved until town meeting, similar to, you know, projects which have taken far too long, like our preschool playground and some of these other things that seem to, seem to be approved quickly and then super slow-moving. So the, the hope here is that similarly, this stuff will...
So this money would be available July 1st.
Right.
So it's, it's a long process. But the one thing about this is, as you just explained, when some projects take longer or say something got backordered, this money doesn't go away. It isn't a use it, and you have a small window. It has been approved. It's been borrowed or free cash. It is set aside. So, for example, with the doors, the quotes, you know, it was, it was not a proper quote that we received with enough detail to back it up. And so it couldn't be put on this year if we wanted. It wasn't a quality quote.
June, do, I'm assuming that the town meeting where this is approved is the spring town meeting, not the winter town meeting. And so are these quotes, do these vendors give us quotes that they'll honor after July 1?
No.
Or will they rebid all of these projects?
They can't guarantee pricing for that.
Thank you.
But I will say that the town administrator, when he directs us to fill out the form, he insists that we put in a buffer, a 10% buffer for these quotes, assuming that exactly what you said, prices will go up, things will change, supply chains, issues, whatnot. So all these prices reflect that buffer amount.
Any other thoughts? All right. So again, thank you to Kirk. Thank you to June. Thank you to the support staff in the office who have helped us put stuff together. And thank you honestly to any of the staff members who continue to put things on our radar. You know, some of us are, we are in our lane, so to speak. And I might not notice every door that I walk through. Might not even know I walked through one on a bad day. So I do appreciate the support we're getting from the district as far as what we need to do. And again, I've said it at every meeting, these are the buildings we have. These are the buildings we got. We got to take care of them. We got to make, make sure they're appropriate and meet in the needs of kids and adults.
Okay.
So tonight, I will just present the timeline and entertain any questions around budget. It is that time of year. The district leadership team and I have a meeting tomorrow. Actually, it's our first real budget meeting as a team is tomorrow. And so based, I've just laid out the timeline so you can see. So from now till February 5th is the totality of the work we do as a leadership team and as a school committee. February 5th is our target date. That's your school committee meeting for a public presentation of the proposed school budget. Similar to last year, it was around the same week. And to vote... to vote for approval at the school committee level from the 6th of February to April 5th. We will continue to do what we did last year and do the roadshow and talk to the board of selectmen and the FinCom, and by that point, maybe our engagement team, our subcommittee will have really helped us identify some good strategies for engaging the community in the tutorial, so to speak, with the budget book. And then on April 5th is the public presentation of the overall town budget for the town to approve at the Rockport Spring Town Meeting. So, it's a pretty tight timeline. Again, February 5th is about as long as town administrator is okay with us taking, so that's the timeline we're going to work within. So, thoughts, questions, or...
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
So, I will jump out of this slide, and you have in your drive, you have the Fun Flow overview for quarter one, and then you have the details, so I'll pull the detail up and blow it up to the best of my ability. And again, I'm not going to have June step us through the whole thing, you've seen this kind of document a million times, and you just saw the year-end document two weeks ago, so it's the exact same format with a change in numbers. But June, if you want to just take a minute or two and highlight anything that jumps out that you think is worth noting?
Right, it's very early in the year, a lot of things change, we've really, it's covering July, August, and September, as you know, school's only in session for really September. So, it's everyone's best guess, and we'll be tweaking the data I get from Allison and analysis of the general ledger as each quarter goes by. I think we're on target for what our goals were of where we should be to, you know, prevent overrides from coming. The only concerns I always have, and they're always every year, it's things that are out of control, and the two main departments where that is, can happen, will be special ed and operations and maintenance. We don't know what the winter's going to be, we don't know what our fuel needs are, what things break, what needs to be replaced. And then also, the whole area of special ed, we don't know any children moving into the districts, or change in needs, or staffing. So, those would be my areas that, right now, I'm happy with what I see, I just can't predict what's going to be in the pipeline for the rest of the year. School choice, we don't have the number yet, it's a spring number, so I'm using what we budgeted, what we expected to come in. And the other one is circuit breaker revenue, that is an estimate from the state right now. That they do fund, so that can change, and it can change in a downward way, but right now, they're confident in the number that they gave, they will update as the year goes on if something, as far as their revenue receipts, they do have the right to change the percentage that they fund us on that. It's happened before, but it hasn't happened recently. So, with that, and then any additional grants that come in that would allow us to offset instead of buying additional, we'll certainly take advantage of that, but I believe we're on the target we wanted, which is good. It's good, no huge, huge surprises have come forth so far, so I'm happy with what I'm seeing.
Go ahead.
Thoughts, questions, panel chair?
I think after five years, I'm finally understanding this process. So, feel bad, Jess. It's, all the numbers are making sense, so.
So, that is, that is our agenda for the night. We do have a need for...
Essex North.
So, that, yeah, so that is, that is not happening tonight.
That's been struck.
Yeah, that will happen in two weeks, based on a process between my office and Town Hall. Nope, okay.
So, we do have a need for executive session. So, we are going to adjourn from executive session?
From regular session into executive with no intention to return.
Can I just say one thing real quick?
Yeah.
I was able to attend Chicago the Musical, and it was excellent, from stage crew to lighting to the band, and of course, the very talented actors and actresses, it was a great production.
Oh, great.
So glad you said it, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Small and mighty in this town, I'm telling you, it's crazy.
We have some of our stars in the audience.
I would also just say, we really appreciate people coming out to listen to the meeting. It's wonderful to have people in the room that we're not speaking into the void, it's really great to have people with us, and we always appreciate our presentations very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
So, you can obtain a motion to leave, leave full session to enter executive session and with no intention to return?
Yes, okay. Do I, yes, yes, you are.
Yep.
Thank you so much, Henry. Okay. Thank you, good to see you. Do I have a motion to leave regular session to adjourn, to go into executive session and then adjourn from executive session?
So moved.
Do I second?
Seconded.
All, all, yeah, roll call for all of, okay.
Lorenz, yes?
Eltir, yes?
Riley, yes?
Oakes, yes.
Delice, yes? Okay, there you go, oh, women.
I'm going to keep the TV.